Council, we ask you to all rise, do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Face the flag, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow with me, please.
General, we come to you tonight, we just thank you guys for another day, and I pray God that it's because of this meeting that you would just give us, give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. And God, I just want to thank you for, for the baby, for Erica's baby. God, that everything's going well, and he's home, and I just thank you, God, for that. And I just pray, God, that you would just bless our city, bless our nation, pray these things, and your sons, amen.
Amen. Okay, Susan, just two.
Well, welcome to everyone, and Pogue, it's great to have you back with us, and what a beautiful baby. It's very good to have you back, we've been missing you.
Yeah, I thought I was young death.
You missed that too. Congratulations to the vice mayor on another grandbaby.
Yes, 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 sorry.
All kinds of good news, so everyone's doing well. So at this time, with the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. This is the public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board, the council, at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down into the business agenda. A public hearing, a public hearing for intent to file for application for financial assistance for the capital improvements fleet program. Mr. Delay, does this go to you, sir?
Oh, sorry, where we at?
Public hearing, item number one.
Uh, yes, we are, this is for a fifty thousand dollar grant through USDA.
Do we have anybody that want to say anything?
This is for capital improvement.
Capital improvement, this is, this, there's multiples here, but this, this particular items for capital improvement?
Yeah, but this is a public hearing, so.
Right. We'll address the next item next. Hearing none, Johnny, will we move to the next agenda item?
We gotta recommend it, approve it.
No, you don't vote on it.
You don't vote on it here.
But typically, you would ask if anyone has any comments they would like to make.
On each individual one, correct. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
And seeing none, you would close this public hearing and move on to the next one.
And seeing none, we will close this public hearing and move on to the next one. The second public hearing of the evening, the public hearing for the intent to file for application for financial assistance for the police department fleet program.
Okay, this is for two police units through USDA grant.
Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make, questions they have about this particular item?
Do we know how much that is, or, I'm sorry, we're not supposed to ask questions in public.
I think the public is, no, the public is, if the public asks any questions.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay, hearing done, we'll close out that public hearing, move to the third one. Public hearing for the annexation of property located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section one township two south, range eleven east, into the corporate limits of the city of Atoka.
And this is the substation property up north of, of town here.
So anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing done, we will close out this part of the public hearing, and that will end our public hearing for the evening, and we will move down to the business agenda, item number one.
Do you want to see, so Mr. Marble can talk about the behavior?
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm gonna do the minutes in your deal, and then we'll go to. So item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
The motion, second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting city manager's report, Mr. Delay?
That is attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
I'm just glad my yard doesn't look like a skating rink anymore.
I bet you are.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. I recommend approving.
Okay.
I'll second.
The motion is second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting blanket purchase orders for the city of Atoka.
Those are attachment number three, they're monthly and recurring POs.
I recommend, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have motion, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. And since we have a guest here this evening to speak, we're gonna move the agenda around a little bit and go to the public requested agenda item. Discussion and/or action on the disposition.
Which number are we going to?
This is C one.
Oh, okay.
On the second page. Okay. Discussion and/or action on the disposition of the M one ten Howitzer at the forty-fifth infantry park. Come out on up, good sir. That was Mr. Marble this evening.
How you doing, sir?
Hello, hello. Well, I'm representing the veterans of Atoka County, as commander of the Atoka County Veterans Council, and American Legion Post Forty-Eighth Year of Atoka. Come to our attention that we want to move that Howitzer. And so we have, we would like to retain that, and we offer the spot out at our memorial. I think it'd be a good spot to honor our veterans that have served. We have many within the county that were in artillery, some didn't actually run that one, but they run one just like it.
Yeah.
So we would like to have it retained, move, if possible, moved out to the memorial.
What, what area around the memorial were you?
Oh, we were thinking somewhere between the community building and the memorial.
Okay. Think it would be highly visible there and be good for the community to be able to see it, and any pastor through town?
People go and look at it.
Right, it'd be between where they could, you know, it'd be nice to have sidewalk go across to visit.
Carol? You got any questions?
Now, I know, so the, the property there, is that, is that in the veterans?
Lease, it should be in the veterans lease area.
I've never seen the veterans lease, so I don't know, but we'll, we'll look and see.
We'll look at it and see.
It is, I can say that it is city property.
Right.
We have a lease on it.
Right.
I like the idea, I think it, so looking at it. Looking at putting this in this section right here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, as long as it fits and it's right there, if, as long as it's on the north side of where that sidewalk is that comes across?
Mm-hmm.
That connects everything?
It's accessible.
I think that would be great, and that would, you know, either there or back behind there, but right there, it would be very visible. So, yeah, either on the west side or on the east side, on the east side, you might eventually have problems if that street widens. But, yeah, I don't have a problem with it being on the west side and north of the sidewalk. Um, can it be rejuvenated?
Well, it would be nice if it, if it could be repainted, and it's not a problem.
I think in the process of moving it, when you do that, that's the time to clean it up and give it a fresh coat.
And make it look, I would request that it be fenced. Um, we have a big issue with where it is now with kids climbing on it. If it could be, if it could be fenced, and I'm not saying a big fence, but maybe even a short decorative fence with a sign that says, keep off.
We were always concerned about that too, particularly out there for liability issues.
Because we get a lot of kids.
I didn't have a new year's plan on it. So, yeah, I really didn't.
Our contract with the army specifically says we are not to allow people to climb on it, but I'm not sure that's ever been. Well, you can't.
Kids are gonna be kids. I got sick boys, I know what they're gonna do.
I have a climbed on it as an adult, but I climbed on it as a kid.
Well, I think to honor our veterans, I think there's a.
Well, we, we would appreciate it, I know my veterans are, I have quite a few within our unit that, well, that actually operated. It, it's an eight man, well, it's actually a thirteen man crew to run that stuff, propelled Howitzer. I don't know that much about it, I wasn't in artillery, but, but when, when we heard that it was coming, that, thought about moving it, you know, I had a lot of guys come up and say, well, I, it's what I, I was on one of those units right there.
I would say that would be tight quarters with thirteen people inside that.
Where you got loading people outside.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It really only, you had a driver, two crewmen loading, and then you had the others.
Well, I know we were talking about suggestions on moving it, do the veterans have any suggestions? We talked about it a little bit, but not much.
Unfortunately, we don't have any resources of our.
Yeah, just suggestions.
I think we'd have to, you know, the first step would be.
Army would move it, but that might take years to get them to, and y'all have more clout, honestly, y'all have more clout.
It's the city's responsibility, if it moves, it's the city's responsibility, and so we, of course, they're gonna have requirements on securing the vehicle, you know, being permanently affixed, so whatever foundation is poured, like at the current site, it has weld plates that the tracks are actually welded to, the plates in the concrete, so assuring that is done, and, you know, maybe it makes more sense to paint it before we move it? I don't know, we can look at that and then pick it up, move it, so when it comes out to the new site, it's there and ready to go, so.
And we, you know, we certainly offer any support that, that we could.
Okay. Very good.
Anything else?
I don't have any questions, I, if anybody else didn't have, I recommend approving.
Are we approving to move it from the forty-fifth infantry park to an area next to the veteran memorial?
Well, I mean, I think.
Don't approve it yet, or?
We wanna wait and get some estimations together.
I think we're a little bit premature, I guess you could, you could make a motion to.
Says discussion or action, so.
Make a motion that it's the council's intent to move it out there, pending, you know, cost and red tape, for lack of a better word.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site, the location of the move, pending costs associated with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion on the floor?
I'll second.
And I have a second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Mr. Marble, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move back to agenda item number four, discussion and/or action on accepting a quitclaim deed from Atoka Trails LTD to the city of Atoka for the purpose of releasing potential construction lease covering property located within section nine township two south, range eleven east, known as the Atoka Trails Golf Course.
This matter is on, as you know, the city entered into a long-term lease with Atoka Golf Club Incorporated, which was the successor, which Atoka Trails LTD is the successor in interest to. We have now formed the AMGA Atoka Municipal Golf Authority, and they are taking over operations of the course, and so we are terminating the old lease, and this quitclaim deed from Atoka Trails LTD to the city of Atoka is being given to terminate that lease. You just need to accept that as a, as a formality.
Okay, so, I thought we didn't, I thought we were just, the property was ours.
It is.
Okay. I mean, I.
And the city has right now a lease with the Atoka Golf Club for that property, it's a long lease, it lasts until twenty thirty.
It was a dollar a year or something like that, or?
Yeah, so we just need to get rid of.
Ten dollars, okay, sorry.
Yeah, there's no longer need for the license, if there's an authority.
Okay.
Correct.
So.
Okay.
Well, this is just a formality of terminating that lease, and you have to accept it.
Okay, well, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
The motion is second, roll call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action on establishing a bank account with the mayor state bank for the Atoka Municipal Golf Course Authority and Oklahoma Public Trust, designated and authorized signers.
Is that where they have their bank account now?
I believe so.
It is, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve. With the current signers, the signers that we have on everything else, right?
Who are they?
I think it's Susan and me.
Susan, myself, Rhonda, and the mayor and vice mayor.
Perfect.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. As we move on, item number six, discussion and/or action on adopting ordinance number five nine eight, annexation of property located within the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section one township two south, range eleven east, into the corporate limits of the city of Atoka. Again, this is the land out by the substation to the north that handles the transformer and the power that goes to the data center.
So the only thing that's gonna be on that property is what's there now.
Correct, sir.
Why are we putting this in?
Because the revenues that come off of the power usage have to be in the city limits, and that point is where the revenues are, is where the power starts from, so without that start point.
And it's already our property though, right?
No, it's out in the county. It's, I mean, it is literally abutting, it is literally abutting the existing property of the city. The main substation is in the city limits of Atoka, because of the arrangement inside the substation, this wouldn't fit inside the substation, so it had to sit adjacent to the north, but the original understanding from the company was that it would be in the city limits.
And this is probably owned by Twenty-One MM, which is the company that owns the data center, they have consented to the annexation and signed all the required documents, so.
Okay, almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have motion is second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and/or action on adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten, granting approval to proceed with the proposed budget for application purposes and showing support by the city council to move forward with the Sixth Street Connect Project. Mr. Delay?
This is where the council previously approved for the grant writer to write the grant for this project, it requires a resolution as part of that grant, and you have exhibit A with the highlighted numbers are the total amount that the grant will be written for, and this map here shows the area of which we're talking about.
Do we know the overall length of the project? Is it, is it half mile?
I don't know, I don't think it says that, and it goes to Weston, however forever for it is from Greathouse to Weston.
Considerable distance.
Yeah, I've never heard them say that that long. It'd be three lane from Greathouse through to the bridge, or through the bridge, and then on the, this side of the bridge to Weston would be two lane, and it would be straightened out up here on this curve.
And the roads and.
Where are you getting all the land, are you gonna take out, I mean, you gotta widen that quite a bit.
We own the land.
Well, I know we own the land, but what about our housing project that was?
It won't affect.
It won't affect, it's just that corner up there where it goes around like this, it'll just kinda go straight through there, so that little.
They've redesigned for the lot.
We kept an abatement for this project.
Oh, okay.
We'll also be applying later.
But they'll build the, build the. But they'll build, build something over that, that bridge or?
Yeah, that was the one I asked.
They redo it, they redo it.
So we won't have a water issue.
Yes, that's why. There's gotta be a bridge.
Okay.
Yes.
I would like to note that the school would like to have plenty of notice, cause we're gonna have to reroute every bus while that project is going, because we unloaded elementary first off Sixth Street. So we're gonna have to come in backwards or something.
Okay. Well, it'll, it'll be a while.
We'll have meetings with y'all to go over all the particulars, assuming we get the grant. Uh, it's a very competitive grant, so, uh, it's not like it's a for sure deal or anything. It's just, uh, something that we, we hope very much that we can get.
And then you'll keep us in the loop, too? So we keep us in the loop, so we know where.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
And Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, since we're taking this agenda out of order, uh, we need to revisit item number six, because we forgot to, uh, pass, uh, have a second vote on declaring an emergency.
Okay. So under item six, you say?
Yes, on the ordinance. I need someone to make a motion to declare an emergency.
Under item six, under, we approved ordinance number five nine eight for annexation of the property located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section One Township Two South, Range Eleven East, in the corporate city limits, into the corporate city limits of Atoka. Do I hear a motion to declare an emergency?
I'm making a motion to, uh, approve to declare an emergency.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Item number eight, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the city manager to request street lights for the Atoka Sports Complex of up to nine poles and fourteen lights. This will be out, and there's a map here on your.
Is that along the road?
You wanna come up and tell them about what you got planned, Carol?
Basically, we need this on the city council agenda. There's also the layout approval on the AFA agenda. Or might be the ACDA. Anyway, we're, we need lights out there, especially what we've noticed with walkers and different people leaving at the sports complex. I mean, we had games last year, or last spring, at ten o'clock at night, and so that parking lot is very dark and that roadway is very dark. So we need, we're working out this deal with PSO. Um, it would be included in on the city, because all of the electric bills are in the city's name, and, uh.
For the streetlights.
For the streetlights, so.
I think we need to be very cautious how we set the poles in order not to flood light back onto the fields and cause, cause vision.
According to their engineer, he has, he said it will not, because of the type of lights, it will not affect onto the, onto the, um, fields. That, um, so some of them are floodlights and some of them are directional lights.
And, and this is the city's responsibility?
No, they will.
With PSO, there's a streetlight program that PSO has with the city of Atoka, so all of the streetlights in town have an affixed price. And then PSO covers some of the cost of this, and then we cover some of the cost, whereas it's all under the streetlight program?
I believe it's all under the streetlight program. And then, um, Kelly disperses out the different charges.
She'll know which ones to charge to ACDA out of that, but it'll, but it'll all go through the city initially.
Okay.
It's charged to ACDA or AFA?
Yeah, yeah, AFA.
Okay.
So they put them in, then we pay the bills, but, uh, isn't that basically it?
Yeah.
It's significantly reduced amount. I don't for sure exactly that.
It's on the city council, because it is the city's electric bill.
Yeah, it's our account.
Yeah.
It's a public safety matter, correct?
Definitely safety.
Yes.
Yes. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Moving down, is there any new business? Any council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. All right.
Well, you're free to go anytime you want to, or you can stay in there. All right.
Um, as we move into our next meeting of the evening, the Atoka Municipal Authority, would you call, roll, please?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms., uh, all right, Ms. Pope? Here. Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Move down. This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the post agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Under A, item one, a public hearing for the intent to file for application for financial assistance for the water treatment plant improvement project. At this time, is there anyone that wishes to ask a question over the water plant improvement project? Hearing none, we will close out this public hearing. Did I do that correctly, Mr. City Attorney? Dashing, wasn't it? Okay. Item number two is a public hearing for the intent to file for application for financial assistance for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. And at this time, is there anyone in attendance that has any questions pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant improvement project? Hearing none, we will close out this public hearing and move down into our business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
A motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Is there any new business? Any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. As we move into our last meeting of the evening, the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call, roll, please?
Ms. Pope?
Get, here.
Uh, Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Again, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we will move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the economic development director's report. Ms. Carroll, good evening.
Good evening. So what I've done for this meeting is the twenty twenty-three recap. And, uh, we have a lot accomplished last year. It doesn't look like much when you look at it on a list, but this is, this is, keep in mind, this is just the high-level recap. We certainly accomplished a lot, and I really want to thank the council and the ACDA board members for all the work that everybody has done to help us make these giant strides in Atoka.
Well, if you live here, I don't know that you pay that much attention to what's going on, but if you slow down and go through Main Street or Court Street, there's a lot of things been happening this last year.
Yes, sir.
It's exciting to see.
I think it's cool that we have all this construction going on. You know, now we've got the little, all those projects going outside, going toward Toshka, and, I mean, you know, I know Toshka stuff isn't really ours, but it's still nice that we've generated enough revenue or whatever to get more businesses to come in, no matter where it be.
And we all heavily, heavily market Atoka.
Yeah, it's downtown Sunday, and it was nice just to be able to go get some ice cream and stuff, you know, downtown, you know?
It, it's really, I, you can't walk downtown without smiling, because of all the people that are there.
Yeah, there was a lot of people downtown.
And that is, that has really helped us on, uh, our quality of life and bringing in these industries.
Well, it kind of shows what you can do if you work together.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's been an amazing year.
Yes, it is.
Been a few meetings over the last three or four years, but it's.
A few.
It was well worth it, all of it, to, to see the, see the beginnings of what, what can start to happen, so.
I can't remember you said, talking, we was talking about lights and the splash pads. Is there lights over there?
No.
No.
Okay. We're not planning on.
Well, it closes at dusk, simply because.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, because we don't, well, it.
Usually it's about eight thirty or so in the summertime?
Well, yeah, eight thirty or closer than nine. But yeah, it closes at dusk, and that's pretty much standard on these splash pads.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the director?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and action regarding approving or rejecting the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority, Atoka Sports Complex, requested layout of the streetlights on the road and parking lot perimeter.
Mr. Attorney?
Oh, yes. This should have been on APAS agenda, and so therefore I would ask that we just skip this, and we will revisit it later if necessary.
Very good, sir. And I see you've.
And that was no fault of Susan's. Just wanna make that clear.
Very good. I see you've been more than happy to write out some language for an executive session.
I did not. That was, that was all, that was all Carol. I blame her.
Okay.
But let's see how fast you can read it.
I'll do my best. Here we go.
I do have, I do have one question. With the approval on the city council, do we need to bring this back for an additional approval on the layout?
Probably not, but.
Is that enough?
If PSO wants it, we would, but otherwise.
No, all they want is the request filled out by Danny.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that's.
Yeah.
Probably micromanaging.
Okay.
All right, you ready?
Item number five, an executive session is authorized by Title Twenty-Five State Statute, Section Three Oh Seven C eleven, all nonprofits, foundations, boards, bureaus, commissions, agencies, trusteeships, authorities, councils, committees, public trusts, task force, or study groups supported in whole or part by public funds or entrusted with the expenditure of public funds for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within their jurisdiction. If public disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of products or services, or if the public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business specifically to update the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority Board on Economic Development Projects and for possible real estate transactions that cannot be publicly disclosed due to confidential nature of the business revocation. That's it. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a, motion in a second. I need a bottle of oxygen.
Forty-eight.
Get a roll call, please.
Forty-eight seconds.
Felt like longer.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
That's a useful executive session. So start getting along with them.
That's a useful executive session, so start getting along with them.